Part of the job of being on the council. And, you know...
Now, I understand that we perhaps have a caller on the line already.
Oh.
Well, wonderful. Well, let's invite our caller to the table and see what questions or comments they may have. Caller, thank you for calling in. What do you have on your mind tonight?
Well, thank you very much.
Well, just a second. Let's get the volume out here.
...on the table, but many times I wish I could stand on the council table, literally. But at any rate, I'm sure Ms. Cave must be prepared for the onslaught she would receive should she prevail in this election simply by what they did to you, Diana, as mayor. They gave you credit for all the dysfunction even though you had one vote. You were such a threat because you insisted upon facts and answers to legal questions, and they put you down. And now they say there is respect when in fact there is. The only respect we ever had is when you led the council as mayor and you were basically after Rebecca was not there was the only one that showed respect to the citizens. And we must have that back. But I'm sure Rebecca will have, as she has shown in the past, the backbone to stand up to these dysfunctional people who can't remember how they voted on important issues. And I appreciate the fact that she does have the financial wherewithal that she knows no one's going to try to pull the wool over her eyes, but it will be quite a task to try to be the only functional respectful person on that council, but I'm sure she's up to the task. We're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, caller, for those comments.
Yes, thank you, caller. I appreciate your vote of confidence, and I am up to the task. I could be one against four, and one is stronger because I have, like you said, probably the only backbone that'll be up there. And I look forward to it. I find it a challenge, but it's, there's so much more that goes on beyond, behind the scenes for citizens like yourself, caller, that I can do that maybe the cameras don't show you. And I know, Diana, all the work you do behind the scenes. Maybe it doesn't always, you know, come out in the show or in your vote, but when people can hear that you're for the people. The council right now is scared. They're more scared to have any new people on, and especially myself, because I've been on there before. I know what goes on. I know how it goes.
You're not going to be hoodwinked.
No, exactly. And I think that's something that is a threat to them because they can't do the same old and throw everybody out. I'll be a voice that is not going to allow the microphone to be turned off. I mean, there's respect out there, and they talk about it, and they don't do it, but they act like they do. So, thank you, caller.
Yeah, and you know, talking about respect and listening to citizens' concerns and suggestions and petitions, I think that that certainly is a strength that you came to the table, that you would be coming to the table with today because you have a record of showing that in the past. And I think back to, you know, there was a road project on Mississippi Street in the west side of Maplewood, and citizens came forward and they said, "We have a petition." And all of the citizens on that street signed that petition saying that they didn't want to have the road reconstruction done because they felt it was not necessary. It was just a little service road that was only a very couple blocks long by their properties, and all property owners signed it. And you voted in support of that petition. Tell our viewers a little bit about that.
I think it's really important when you're, when there's projects out there, that you go to the neighborhoods and you go to the different areas to find out what people want. You mentioned, Diana, that the streets aren't all rated the same, and there's not all the need. Although sometimes when you look at the blanket of the project, they make it look like everything is necessary, the whole thing needs to get done. There's a, you know, "There's a fire. We need all the streets redone," and there's, "People are worried. They can't get out. There's potholes everywhere." Well, that isn't the case. And in this case, it was the same thing. These people didn't need to pay the fee, I think it was probably around $6,000 at the time, back, even back then, to have their little, little street redone, like you said. And people went out and signed petitions. And I think that's so important when you allow groups to speak up. Now, maybe there's a case in this one, it worked for the people. Maybe there's other cases where there's, you know, not enough of them. If half the street would have done it, I know we did it on Burke Avenue, where half the street said, "No, don't do a pork chop at the end. Don't knock our street off." But the other half, you know, and we had away what the best decision then was for the neighborhood.
Right, and you see, that was, you know, that was during a time where there was really this encouragement of having more citizen input, even when it came to talking about what to do with their streets. And you talked about Burke Street and that issue about that, and, you know, and sometimes it went the way the citizens wanted it to go, sometimes it didn't go that way. In the case of Mississippi Street, I believe they, only you and I supported the petition. The other three council members said, "No, you need to have your street done." And yet, there was another neighborhood where only, it wasn't a unanimous petition not to do their street, and there was a majority of the council that said, "Yep, okay, you don't have to have your street done." So, it's, you know, you just never know. But at least citizens felt that they were welcome to come forward and to be able to say what they thought. And lately, now, there's Viking Drive is a great example where you can see that the environment has changed, and that's why I think it's so important for citizens to realize that the environment has changed at City Hall. Because Viking Drive, for instance, is along, north, right along Highway 36 by Hazelwood there.
Yes.
And the city is looking to make that be a frontage service road as part of the new exchange, interchange there with English and the MinDOT and all that kind of thing. All the people who live along there, 16 homes, they all signed a petition saying they didn't want to have that done to their street. And that petition was submitted to the council, and the council waved it kind of away and said, dismissed it, all said, "Sure, thanks for the petition, but, oh, well, you know, we haven't decided anything on that at all." And yet, you know what? There's been community, neighborhood meetings on this thing for almost a year or more. And yet, the council just said, "Oh, well, you know, okay, thanks for your petition. Throw it on the pile." I mean, that was the attitude.
Citizens see a lot of this, this attitude of, "That's great. You have a voice with this new council. You used to be able to come forward when Rebecca, Diana, wanted to hear what you had to say. We don't want to hear what you have to say. We know what's better for you."
Yeah.
Big issue right now is the trash issue. And I've talked to so many people, and I'm encouraging everybody out there to remember on November 8th, to not only get yourselves and all members of your house, but to go around your neighborhood that day and encourage your neighbors to vote, because it does make a difference, and it will make a difference. City Hall is not going to put a damper. If our voices come out there and I get elected, this is not going to be a closed issue. I guarantee it. That is one thing on my campaign trail. This is something that is not going to, the number of citizens that have spoken up about this issue, they can't ignore that. And they've been ignoring it, but they're not going to be any longer. This vote is going to tell them, "You're no longer going to just make decisions without listening to us." And I think it's so important that you get out there, and so many people are, "I'm going to get my neighbor then." And I said, "You have to get your neighbor out there. You've got to go out and get family members. You have to call everybody you know. If you can do anything for my campaign, you call people you know and encourage them that day to get out there, because this is so important for you. It is for all of Maplewood. It is not just for one area of Maplewood. It is for everyone." And we have Roseville looking at us thinking, "Well, what are they doing? We've tried it seven times, and the citizens said, 'No.'" Well, it looks like, looks like it's a good thing. I don't know, but they're not listening to their people. Darn right, they're not listening to you. You have thousands of people who have written in, called in, sent postcards, sent letters, sent emails about how ridiculous this is and you do not want it. And government needs to stay out of your homes. Stay out of your trash, you know? And our citizens are going to stand up for this. I know they are. And I know you guys can do it out there. You have to empower yourselves to make a difference. And once you make a difference, you're just gonna, you're gonna realize how good you feel because this is going to change City Hall.
It will.
Yeah.
It truly will. And I think it's important that, I share something else that I have discovered that I think goes to the issue of showing how disingenuous certain council members are about this issue. Because there's been many meetings about it. Of course, they always say that we're going to be starting the conversation soon with the citizens, but I haven't seen it yet. But here's the issue, is that they've been talking about that when they move to government-managed trash collection, that, well, it's only, they estimate, going to cost $15,000 a year in staff time. And yet, recently, in a court proceeding, Mr. John Nephew, who is running for city council, he says that, and he said this under oath at this hearing, that he is not aware that there's going to be any administrative fees added on to the cost of the trash collection. Now, of course, that is totally opposite of what you've heard at any of these public meetings that if you watched it. But here's something even more important, is that if he said under oath that he's not aware of the city going to add on any administrative fees to cover the costs of the city staff time, in reality, what that means is that then the city, citizens, through their tax dollars, are going to be subsidizing a national trash hauler monopoly with taxpayer dollar that instead of them having their own administrative assistant to manage the phone, to manage the routes, to manage the complaints, they're going to have city staff do it. And so, that means if they're not going to be doing a charge through, pass through administrative fee to cover those city costs, and the city just eats it and pays for it in taxpayer dollars, that means the taxpayers are subsidizing a national trash hauler who's got a monopoly in Maplewood, throwing small, family-owned, local businesses out the door. I think that's just wrong. That's not right. And it's disingenuous of Mr. Nephew to say this, that he thinks he's not aware of any administrative costs going to be added on. I guess, you know, we'll have to keep him to that.
Oh, yeah, keep him to task and ask him what he really means by that.
Yes.
You know, this, this issue, I don't want to talk about this all night, but it is such a hot topic because so much is going on, and people are just, people are in an uproar. It's ridiculous. I have my own, I can negotiate my own fees. Diana, I think you can. I think all of you out there are smart enough to negotiate your own fees. If you don't like your trash hauler, get a different one. There's a million out there. We just allowed Tennis to come up into North Maplewood. Not, not "we" allowed. They have enough trucks now, and they could get it on their route. I mean, they had to do a lot of strategic planning to do North Maplewood. I mean, there's a lot of streets, a lot of routes. And I'm also, this touches on a subject for me that's really hard right now in these hard economic times. I have family members, I have friends, we all know people out there today who are hurting, who've lost jobs, who are having a hard time paying for food for their kids, for their families, making mortgages, being able to pay for gas. And during this time, instead of bonding as a community, city, the city council is looking at eliminating all these household stops for numerous trash haulers that are locally based out of here, Minnesota. A lot of them are just right around the suburbs. And I'm appalled. I'm just appalled. I, if I was a trash hauler, I would be fighting this tooth and nail.
Well, and you bring up a good point in that at one of the council meetings, Willie Tennis of Tennis Santation got up and he said that between himself and Gene's disposal, that between the two of those companies, that they have 49% of the business in Maplewood, 49%, and they are local, family-owned trash businesses that have been in Maplewood a long time. And with this action, what this council is doing is telling these businesses, "Go home. We don't want you doing your residential trash collection business in Maplewood. Go home. Take your toys and go somewhere else."
Yes.
Well, that's just wrong.
Yes, it is. And it's just wrong for all those people who are going to be losing their jobs, who are not going to be able to support their family, because our city council decided to go with a nationwide company, not even based out of here.
And of course, they say that, well, if they can't negotiate a contract with them, they'll just go to the next one in line and the next one in line, except that here's, here's the issue, is that then what was the point of the RFP? If you're just going to keep going down the line and you're changing what that contract is based upon what your whim is at the time, then what was the basis of the RFP, the Request for Proposals? Now, I think, do we have a phone caller on the line? Yes, yes, we do. Okay, well, let's get our next caller on the line and see what's on their mind. Oh, and look at there, we've got November 8th. Don't forget to vote.
Oh, there we go.
And so, folks, make sure you get your pen and paper out and write that down on your calendar. If you haven't put a big X on the calendar, now's the time to do that. And of course, there's other things on the ballot too, besides just the Maplewood City Council election. For a lot of folks who are in the North St. Paul Oakdale School District, there is a bond levy on there as well. And of course, in other various communities, there's other elections. Now, caller, are you there?
Hi, Mayor Longstreet.
Hi.
Thanks for the excellent show. And my point is that, my understanding is Copen, Copen is the party time liquor store, Marv Copen or Copen, he's been on the council before for many years. He's an old hand. And what I hear people telling me is that what he thinks, that he will take care of it in the back room. He will persuade them when the camera's not on, private chambers, or out of the sight of the public. But I see him at the, when I see him at the council meetings, I hardly, he hardly makes an argument. He doesn't get on any of the committees. Had to go to the back room, like the trash working group. Then went to the back room, he didn't get on that committee. So, you know, what I think is that betrayal starts within. And I understand that he was a decision maker on this Viking Stadium, on the Ramsey County Charter Commission, and he led his friends and supporters to believe that he was too rote to let the Ramsey County residents vote on whether they wanted to be taxed on a sales tax for this apparently $675 million stadium. And he led them to believe he was going to vote for the right of the public to vote on it, and then five minutes before the decision makers made the vote, on a split vote, he flipped and out the door. So, you know, that kind of betrayal is more than just regular betrayal. That starts from within his heart. I don't know how people could be confident that he's true to his word. And can we really trust him? What's your feeling about that?
Well, thank you very much, caller, for your comments there.
Yes, thank you, caller. My comments on that, Marv is a, someone who's running for city council. He's an opponent of mine. I think what you said kind of speaks for itself. Not really a voice to be reckoned with on the council. People really don't know much of what Marv stands for or does or doesn't because he's a silent person on the council. So, people sometimes think that's, "Oh, what's wrong with that?" To me, that's a very dangerous person to have on the council. Silent is dangerous. You don't have anybody who's going to stand up for you. You have somebody who's going to say it when they need it for elections, but where's the proof? The proof is in the vote. What do you have to do? I watched the last, the forum we just had, and he brings up things about Schroder Milk. That was 10 years ago, over 10 years ago that...
Probably 12 years ago now.
That he worked on that, and nothing since. So, folks, you've got to look at, you know, something's dead in the water. You've got to let it go. You can't, his vote, you look at the votes since he's been on, everything, "All ayes, all ayes, all ayes, all ayes." I mean, they don't even go down the board and ask, "What's your vote? What's your vote? I want the personal vote. I want to hear it come out of your mouth, a yea or nay." They sit there and go, "All ayes, all ayes." No, I want you to ask me. I want to be able to speak that I am saying aye or nay.
Right.
We don't do all ayes. We don't do, you speak because then it's written down what you did. And this council does all ayes, no discussion. And this candidate is, is the silent candidate that you've got to watch for. You might think, "Oh, let's vote for him because he's harm, he's harmless." No, that's harmful because he's persuaded all the time by the other side. I mean, he's going all his, they do all his handouts and everything with John Nephew. So, whose side is he on? I mean, people get confused where people are, who, do they partner up with somebody? You've got to look when somebody does all that, whose side they're really on.
Mm-hmm, exactly. Now, I understand that we've sparked another phone call.
Okay.
So, let's get our caller on the line here. Caller, thank you for calling in. Questions or comments for us this evening?
Well, thank you for taking my call. And that last guy got me sparked up to call with that Marv Copen's vote when he said he was against that referendum, and he voted for it.
Yes.
Instead of letting us have our vote. So, I'm glad we got somebody running with a backbone and somebody who can treat the citizens with a little courtesy, because there's nobody there now that does. And as far as being silent, the only thing I've heard Marv say since he's been on there is he second's everything that comes along. That's it. That's all. He knows how to say a second.
Thank you, caller. I agree with you, and I, and I think a lot of people don't know about the referendum that Marv sits on the Ramsey County Charter Commission.
Yeah, and he's one that voted that we didn't get to vote.
Exactly.
When he said, and the whole, the whole council said they were against it for Arden Hills.
Yes.
Because of the Ramsey County voters, or Ramsey County citizens having to pay that extra tax.
And they were going to let, and they were going to let the people decide.
Yeah.
And at the last minute, he voted to say, "No, people, you don't have a choice."
Yeah.
We'll decide.
And so, to me, that's a downright lie.
Yes, it is.
Because he said all along he was going to let us vote for it.
So, I do have to take back what I said. He did make a vote. He did make a decision. He hasn't been too silent. He just did one for Ramsey County. I forgot he was on the Charter Commission.
But it was against us citizens, is what it was.
Yes, he was. So, people can't forget that.
After he said he was for us.
So, he's not going to be for you with the trash issue either.
Well, I don't much care about that because I live in a household where it's all picked up for us, you know?
I know, I know.
You know what kind of household I mean?
Yeah.
But anyway, what are you going to do for the south end down here? Now, we lost our fire station.
Yes, you did.
We have no police protection down here unless we call and specifically say we need you right now.
Yes, you did. One of my other main issues is going, and thank you, caller, for bringing that up, because that is another topic that we were going to discuss tonight, is the closure of fire stations.
Yeah.
South, the south station was closed, number four, and also Parkside, number three.
And we got a lot of disabled people down here in the south end.
Yes, you do.
And now, we're sitting here with no coverage. I said, "Next time I get sick, I'll call Woodbury. They're closer."
Yes.
Than to wait for somebody to come down from way up north.
I think the decision to close those stations was very premature.
Yeah.
Now, they're looking at...
There's nothing wrong with this station sitting up here. It's one of the newer ones.
Exactly. And you had plenty of volunteer firefighters who were, who making all the calls.
Until you got that rude person in there that treats all the volunteers so bad that they don't want to hang around any longer.
Exactly.
That's what the big problem is.
Yes.
That's why all the volunteers are gone. That chief is so rude to them people. And you can see it right in him. And he didn't want it run that way anymore, so he changed everything around. That's why there's no more volunteers. But I think if they worked on it, they could get them back. And you know, the city's supposed to be cutting back, like the council say, "Got to cut back, got to cut back." There was a big notice in the Sunday's job thing about hiring all these people for the city of Maplewood. Did you happen to notice that in the job section?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, they got this ad out to hire all these people, Public Works and city offices.
Oh, and it's so ironic because just Monday night, when at the workshop, Chuck All, the second city manager...
Yeah.
Was just busy talking about how, oh, they really have had to really cut down to the bone and how they lost, they don't have four people now...
They're hiring.
In the Public Works.
Yeah, they're hiring.
Oh, interesting.
Oh, man, you've got to keep your eyes on these guys.
I guess so.
They want to, they want another big raise, plus they want to hire all these people. I don't think it's right.
Yeah.
I agree.
Everybody else had to cut back.
I agree.
I don't think them people in that city hall are so overworked.
No.
Anyway, thanks for taking my call, and see what you can do for us poor old folks down here in the south end.
I appreciate it. I've always been for the south Maplewood.
That's good.
Thank you.
And get rid of that party Marvy, who lies to the citizens.
That's right. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye.
And, you know, the caller brings up a lot of really good questions and concerns because many people don't realize that of all the calls to our fire department in Maplewood, over 80% of them are for medical calls.
Correct.
We have our own ambulance service. We run the medical calls out of our fire department with our paramedics and our firefighters because they all have the same training. And when you close down the fire stations, you're closing down a station by which, where the ambulances can come from.
Yes.
And provide that call, that service call to the community.
Yep.
And we have actually, you may not know this, but we've actually done some data practices trying to figure out where the various runs are coming from to certain calls. And we actually discovered that one medical call up by the Maplewood Mall was responded to with the ladder truck. Okay, why would you respond to a medical call with the ladder truck? I don't know. This sounds like really bad, really bad news.
Yes, I think so. And caller, I appreciate that call because public safety is a very, is a very big priority for me. And having those stations closed and having the guys running from North Maplewood to try to get to a call in South Maplewood, you can't be at two places at one time, and you can't tell me that the gentlemen and women who were down at Station Four that live within five minutes of that station couldn't get there fast enough. And these are volunteers in your community, community friends, people that you knew. And it brings me back to things that my father taught me, my father and mother instilled a work ethic in me, and I'm trying to do in my children. And I, my great-grandparents came over here on both sides, immigrants. They intermarried, different, you know, backgrounds. They dealt with diversity. They're multilingual, and they worked hard every day, every day. Not a day went by that they actually, you know, Sundays were, you know, a day for church, but it also meant my grandma was in cooking. My grandfather worked seven days a week, so when he worked, he couldn't, you know, make it to church with the family and supported the family. And I'm looking at our, and I'm looking at the communities who came together, the grocery stores, the families that said, "Hey, you need help. We'll help you with your kids." They all had kids. They did things together. That's all been torn down. And it breaks my heart when I see the fire station, one of the last community pieces we have for men and women, to belong to a community and to be able to serve your community in a respectful and honorable way, to tell them, "We don't need them." Because, yes, we do. We need them now more than ever. And don't give up, guys, because we don't have the funds to turn Maplewood into a full-time fire department. I mean, like they're doing now, it's, it's ridiculous. I have people from St. Paul who called me and said, "Wow, well, we're actually thinking about coming over. You're the highest-paid fire department in the state." And I, and they won't come back, or they won't come over for various reasons, but I'm just... But it saddens me how communities used to be together. I run into people all the time whose, you know, parents are at games, and the grandparents are there, and they tell me, "I used to serve in Gladstone. I remember the old pop machine in there when, you know, the root beer wasn't have any root in it," you know? And the stories they tell, and the funny runs they used to do, and the parades and everything else, and the wives were all involved, or the husbands if the wives were on it. And just, it's, the good old times, they're not gone yet, folks, and it takes, the communities are still together. We can't let the communities just separate.
Right, and you know, this idea about how to bring about a sense of community and how to bring that back to, especially a, a city like Maplewood, because we're not just a square city. We have many different neighborhoods that are very, in many ways, very geographically different from each other. Because where I live on the west side of Maplewood is not at all like the south end of Maplewood in the Mississippi Critical area. I mean, I live near a freeway.
Yes.
But we have here in Maplewood, we have such a diversity of geography, of housing stock, of many different community assets and how to best build community and to preserve those assets, which is sort of a segue into something else that I know that you have a proven record for. And that is a dedication to preserving our parks and public open spaces. And so, I know that you wanted to speak a little bit to that as well.
Thank you Diana. Yes, I do. I've, when I was on the council prior, I was a proponent to keeping our parks, Maplewood parks, and our public open spaces, our public open spaces. I was committed to making sure that we didn't sell them off like they had done previously for green space, for developers to use, to sell off for land development, to not do your homework when you had the Mississippi River Critical, Mississippi River Critical area running through south, South Maplewood in Fish Creek that they just wanted housing to be put into.
Right.
Conservation easements were something that we began back in 2005, I believe, 2000, oh, no, no, no.
2006, I think.
Six, seven.
Yeah.
You're right. I'm, I'm wrong in there. And it was a slow start. Nobody wanted to do it. "Oh, why, why bother putting conservation easements and protection, Diana? Nobody's going to touch them. No one's going to bother touching the parks. Why would they do that?" And sure enough, I mean, things are being done. I know there's talks in the way of parks right now on the west side that is looking at being sold to a developer so he can increase his density of high-density housing. So, he has green space. Because we require more green space and water runoff, well, there isn't anything around that. So, in order for him to get the green space he needs, there is a park there and the council is looking at selling him the park.
And, and you know, and of course, you'll hear, and this was a, a comment that was-